Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Cheryl, up on Mount View by the school near that long stretch of road before you walk the hill crass?
Yes.
Okay, I have asked to see if you please can put the flashing speed limit sign and they have all permission to put it in our property on the corner because they are speeding tremendously and there are kids riding their bikes and it is a playground. Um, I would just like some of them to stop and slow down. It's been an ongoing issue.
This is the sign you want to put in your yard?
No. That flash for the competing one.
Okay, alright, yes.
And my father has given all permission to put the sign in the yard to see if we can stop them from speeding.
Alright.
Okay, second of all, just so you know, I don't know if you own the round monument there on the arch bridge, but we took care of all the brush, cut back all the trees so you can see the signage and you can see the monument now.
I don't know if that...
We thought it was the town because everybody said you can't touch that, it's the town. My father's like, "You can't see anything and it's hanging in the road, I'll touch back."
What year did mine use it?
Um, it's based on the car's dominance before you go over the bridge.
Oh, it's down on the corner?
It's on our side.
So we could take care and clean that all up so it looks easier.
Just so you know, Barbara did that for many years as an attorney.
I know, it's okay.
So I'm not sure either if it's town or...
It may be the railroad property, is that possible?
Yeah, it's possible.
Um, uh...
No.
Or do you own by the state?
No, because it's on the right side.
The, um, the name has it fenced in here.
Right, this is right.
I'm not sure actually. I mean, we don't mind taking care, but I just want to let you know that it has...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have contacted and I was told, I think you told me, Cheryl, contact Gary McCormick, who works for the Hydro Dam on the railroad tracks by five star. And when I was a past commissioner, I want to say I dealt with the DOT on this. I think his name was Forrest, because it's like 20 years ago and they put rubber inserts in there. But what's happening right now is because the tracks are up...
Yeah.
When people come from Turf Street to make that corner to go up River Street, they stop, go over the tracks. The people coming off the bridge don't. And they're going to hit somebody that's trying to be careful with their car. So I got a call into Gary to see what we can do with the tracks, but I don't know what to do in the meantime to maybe slow the traffic down right here because there's going to be an accident because people are and they can see these tracks raid.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's right where the pavement and the railroad meet on the road. So I told her to ask, ask Gary for the railroad to see if there was something that could be done to kind of make that not so involved in the road.
Years ago, they put in these rubber inserts so it would take it about, that was like 20 years ago.
But they just did a bunch of work in that.
They didn't do any on the, on the crossing. It's all very corporate now.
Yeah.
I actually, it's all quite...
It's either, it's either the railroad or...
Right. I called her to start with the railroad.
Start with Gary.
I'm sure the railroad's going to have some sort of preference, you know, they're going to have to agree on, you know, how to fill the gaps and...
So I'm working on that, so you know that.
I mean, I used to know if it's included in the project, the bridge project, it probably isn't.
We have probably been... Now, there's a bunch of catch basins around town that they dug up and are going to tar that my truck is going to tar and we put on West Street this year.
As far as I know, when I, when you had asked about West Street before...
Yeah.
Um, I asked Highway and they were going to go look at all you were getting up here we're talking about and I didn't, I didn't come to the thing with the follow up to ask.
I, just like a clarification so we know what's going to happen on some of these streets for the catch bases that they dug up.
From what I've seen on other streets, yes, they use tar.
Okay. Here's my thinking, guys. What are you? And still, uh, the village has no problem helping you. We're still very upset about this dump site down by all the jobs. What do we do?
There are no dumping signs for one thing.
Okay.
But the, the people who were, are camping out there, if you were, have been removed.
But there's another camper in there.
Oh, there is?
I went by Saturday or Sunday and I saw another camper within there. You can't block it off with rocks, maybe people can walk down in there.
Where the last camper was, was on the rail bed, which is actually, it's part of the town owned property there.
Yeah.
Some of the property down there, I think Fish and Game take care of.
So should we, as a town or a village, get a hold of Fish and Game and...
Well, we can get a hold of Fish and Game and ask, you're talking about the, I take it on the Connecticut Riverside.
Yeah. My concern is, okay, you have a camper, it's kind of hit, and you're going potty in the camper. Where are you dumping that?
Well, it's all going out into the river and everywhere else. But we, I know that we pulled about two weeks ago...
Yes, I saw that.
We removed a camper and a car.
Yep.
We impounded them because there were criminal activities going on and that's why we were down there taking care of that. People from Vermont and other places love to dump their trash down there.
I heard, I heard another big other trash dump.
And we have, in fact, the police have gone through those bags and a year ago, they found who was dumping it and put out an arrest warrant for the individuals.
I was just wondering if they put gold or something, can't get all the way down.
Well, because it's an access to the river, I know we have to work with Fish and Game on that.
Can we try, see if it comes along?
Try. And they had put gates up elsewhere, but then we run into a big problem of emergency people who had to get to the river within the last 24 hours for people who were in distress in the river had trouble getting into the river in order to help them because of other gates that Fish and Game had put up and locked.
Okay.
So we, you know, what we're balancing is access when we need to get into the river and keeping people out who don't belong there.
Could the police monitor it more, maybe?
They can try, but Celeste, honestly, they have 37 square miles to monitor in town.
Yeah. I, I'm, I'm in a dilemma, I don't know what to do and how to help you guys.
The other thing is, there's camping allowed down there.
The what?
There is camping allowed down there.
There is?
Yeah, it's town property and there's camping is allowed on town property.
But not dumping rubbish?
But not dumping rubbish. So now the question always comes in is, whose rubbish is it?
Yeah.
Right? Camper will tell you, "It's not my rubbish."
Right.
And, you know, uh, so that's, that's, you know, always the problem. Like Peggy said, there are times when we've gone through garbage and have, have located the people and sometimes they've done community service for us as well.
Should.
Okay, so...
If you say there's another camper down there now, I'll...
I saw that, it was Saturday when I was coming home in Key because I looked at it, it was locked, like, look, it was a white gray.
Yeah, we'll have to check on it.
I'll alert the PD to let them know that they need to check.
I've got this, you know, dumping the rub, I, my little normal, I see behind the dugout at the school field, all the deer barks, all stacked up. Yeah, it's just...
No, I agree with you, you know, I cleaned up the section north of that, that parking area.
Really?
The other one up there, the next one up, uh, as part of the cleanup, there was a tribe or the Indian group that was always cleaning it up every day because they kicked into that sacred ground.
Yeah.
And I was part of that for a couple of years, so I know how much trash gets put down there. People are sloped sometimes.
Yeah, it's a lot, try that. I told some dad that girl...
Carrot.
900 pounds?
Yeah, carrot, yeah.
Wow, that was a lot of...
900 pounds worth.
Yeah. And she hasn't paid for it?
No.
No. Alright, that's all I have.
Okay, so we will talk to the police about the camper. We will also ask them to move, I don't know where it is right now, it's been moved around town that the monitor for speeding.
Last time I saw it was up way on...
Well, that's because we've been using it where we are doing paving and things.
And this was up like way on top of the...
No, no, it's been down...
Down and down. Because we should have paved Main Street and we've been working on Wentworth Road, so I know they have Maple Street to pave to take care of cleaning that up. I don't know about West Street.
Yeah, they, uh, they placed two of the catch basins.
Okay.
And they dug them up, but there's old strip...
Well, they'll come back and repair those.
Yeah.
Yeah. My concern is sometimes truck trailers go over them and I just don't want them to sink in.
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll come back usually and pay.
Alright, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very, very much for, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you. How can I go? Bye. And Cheryl, off in the street. Thank you.
Take care.
Bye. Okay, let's go to accounts payable, please.
I make a motion to accept the accounts payable check register in the amount of $626,201.01. The check's issued 7/17/20. This includes a $615,232 payment to Fall Mountain Regional School District.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments to be made? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All votes in favor of the accounts payable register, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes.
I make a motion to accept the payroll register totaling $31,693.33. The check's dated 7/17/20 and a $9.41 payroll tax transfer of $6,125.24.
Second. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and payroll is approved. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the select board minutes of July 9th, 2020.
Second. Are there any questions or comments to be made? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the select board minutes for July 9th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, they are approved.
I make a motion to accept the non-public select board session minutes of July 9th, 2020, and they shall remain sealed.
Second. Are there any questions or comments about the non-public minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All votes in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the non-public minutes are approved and will remain sealed.
We acknowledge the committee reports of the Walpole Conservation Commission, the Azul of June 1st, 2020, and the minutes of the Walpole Conservation Commission of July 6th, 2020.
Minutes are so acknowledged.
I make a motion to accept building permit 2020-22 to construct a 24 by 12-foot woodshed at 28 Eaton Road, map 11, Lot 44.
Second. Are there any questions about this building permit? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All votes in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Building permit 2020-22 is approved for map 11, Lot 44.
I make a motion to accept building permit 2020-23 to build a 22-by-12-foot single bay garage at 28 Main Street, map 19, Lot 42, sub lot zero. And it was a condition of the site plan that there was a, a long system for the satisfaction of the Walpole fire department and they have approved it with the condition that no matter what happens at that property, uh, the fire term must be replaced.
Second. Are there any questions or comments about it? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, please. All votes in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, alright. Building permit 2020-23 for lot, map 19, Lot 22 is approved.
I make a motion to accept the building permit 2020-24 to construct a 36 by 36 horse barn, 885 County Road, map 5, Lot 65.
Second. Are there any questions about this barn permit? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Building permit 2020-24 for lot 5, I mean, map 5, Lot 65 is approved.
I make a motion to accept building permit 2020-25 to construct a 38 by 30 house with attached 38 by 24 garage, 190 Reservoir Road, map 11, Lot 1, Sub Lot 1.
Second. Are there any questions or comments about this building permit? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Building permit 2020-25 for map 11, Lot 1, Sub Lot 1, to build a house with an attached garage is approved. Okay, let's see if we've got old business here. This is marching right along. The first thing that we have on under Old Business tonight is the New Hampshire DOT Municipal Works Zone Agreement that they have asked us to sign. Have you all had an opportunity to read this agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have any questions or comments about it? I think we need to be sure we give a copy of this, we're going to sign this, be sure we give...
Just two copies.
There are two copies here for us to sign, but I want us to be sure that we see that the police department has a copy of this, please, because it speaks specifically to the control of traffic. Is there a motion to accept this and to sign it?
I'm going to approve the New Hampshire DOT Municipal Works Zone Agreement.
Is it just your signature?
I guess it's just really one...
For Peggy to sign.
Alright.
The Municipal Works Zone Agreement.
Second.
All votes in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It is approved and I'm signing both copies. And you will see that we keep a copy and that you send a copy to the police department, please.
They were copied on the original.
Were they? Okay, good. I see that, but I still think they need to see it signed.
Okay.
So we know about it. Thank you. Is there anything else to fill in here? No, I guess not. The Department of Transportation has to sign it. And when they just start, finish signing these papers here and I'll do a follow on. The next item is the Arch Bridge Municipal Lighting Agreement, which we were sent from the state regarding their work on the bridge and their agreement to put up poles and lights, LED lights, and we agreed to maintain them. They invited us to make any additions or corrections that we wanted to add, and I sent it to Jeremy, our town attorney, and we discussed it back and forth through email. And we were both concerned, I think I mentioned this last week, about the liability for the town, should there be any major accident on that bridge? And he has, have you all had a chance to read this since he added to it?
Yes.
Cheryl raised a question about what happens if we want to end this particular project, but I'm not sure that I think that that's necessary. At this point, I see it as something that will go forward for a number of years.
I think if we had the agreement, the lights will walk.
Well, it's, the very last statement says, you know, with termination, all lights will be removed. I'm thinking, I will.
Well, that would be the DOT's responsibility.
Well, is, is that assumed or is that implied in the agreement?
Well, I think it's in the agreement because they're installing it.
Just ahead, the word, "将被 removed by" New Hampshire DOT.
Right.
Takes the assumption out of the equation.
Exactly.
If it is, it's somewhere else.
I would take them down, I think, and like...
I would too, but it doesn't say for that, you know, it doesn't say that they're responsible for removal. It just leaves it open.
Well, we can ask that that be added. That would make you all happier. I would assume that frankly, we probably determine that they would take them down because they're on their bridge.
I guess technically they own the lights.
They own them.
No, technically. But we're doing all the maintenance and we're assuming...
The cost of the electric.
Right, well, that means, I think, assuming this is the least responsibility of ownership.
But we now own them.
Correct. But we're going to maintain them and do everything, I mean, I know history shows that they're probably going to last a long time. It doesn't matter to me, I don't know.
I feel comfortable just ahead of the line that they'll be removed by the New Hampshire DOT. I mean, we're making some other changes, so I'm worried because they could have checked on us.
Well, I, if you had a termination, the street lights will be removed in their entirety by the department, is that...
Yeah.
Period, alright? I'm writing that in. And we have to send it to them anyway because it can't be, I'm writing that in.
Right, you know, we have it to draft now anyway.
We have to send this draft, so I will send this draft, um, back to the DOT and see how they respond to that. They invited us to make changes, so...
Period.
We have, alright? Is there anything else to be changed on it? Okay, we'll send it to the DOT. The next is this sewer easement deed that you, I know Steve, you've read it, have you had enough chance to read this easement?
I, I didn't finish reading it, I read most of it though.
We can cover it next week.
Yeah, let's put it off for next week.
There's no more rush on it.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it's going on for some time.
Yeah, it's one of the last things I was reading before I came in here.
Right now, it's so that we can have, make it easier for future developers.
Right. Because we've already told, we've already returned funds to somebody who wanted to look into this and he's building a second system.
It's not good we don't do it today.
There have been so many people involved in this easement and in the writing of this easement. Is Mark Capcomans, you know, I know he...
In the email that came out with the attachment, his comments are in red.
Okay.
Can you read it?
Yeah, I've got that on my copy at home, there are none on this, unfortunately. They're not in color.
Right. And, um, the concern, of course, is protecting the town and Walpole sewer users.
Right.
Uh, that's really the... And meanwhile, some of the people that are, uh, granters are trying to protect their interests, so...
Are they trying to limit our access or our ability to...
Well, the first thing is they want to make any, they want to make whatever the ordinance is today is what's going to remain, so if we make changes to the order, ordinance...
It invalidates.
It invalidates the agreement.
And, uh... I found that troubling because the ordinance could certainly change over time.
Right.
Sure, it, it doesn't make sense.
We would expect that it would.
Yeah, so there's a bunch of those things. Look at Mark's comments and I think there's like three comments and I think it really explains...
Okay. Yeah, there's some things highlighted and then his, his comments are in red or...
Right.
Yeah, underneath.
It's been going back and forth for months and months and months now.
Alright, so this will appear on next week's agenda, please, Sarah. We are scheduled to be on the next planning board for the lot line adjustment in August and it, the papers were filed by Di Bonardo, uh, this meeting this week, and I have maps to give you, Sarah, and I'll give them to you now, that should go into the office. I think they were all distributed to the, uh, planning board. Okay? Thank you. We'll discuss that, uh, next week too. I don't know what, unless you have questions you want to add right now, I think we're set to go before the board in August. Alright? The next item on the agenda are the off-highway recreational vehicles in Class 6. You've probably all read what we got from Fish and Games and, um, it's the person, and Lou Shelley works with that purpose. And attached to that, obviously, is the letter from the Spiveys about the fact that they've been discussing, um, things with Fish and Game, who are obviously in charge of managing all these off-road vehicles. Do you have any comments or anything you want to add to any of, to this letter or these emails that we've received?
Um, are we responding? I know there, um, my take, my takeaway from it was that they were, wanted to ensure that the police were going to enforce whatever the rules are. And so I didn't know if we were going to respond to them directly or not.
We have been putting signs up there and responding to them frequently. Fish and Game is supposed to be taking care of some of this monitoring and I don't know that, I don't know how we can monitor it. We can't be everywhere in the state.
Right.
But since we've not given authority to anybody, right, Fish and Game has the authority to police some Class 6 roads now. If we give the authority, then we have to assume that responsibility. So I don't think we want to give the authority.
We don't want to take that away from them.
Take the authority, right, exactly. We want to leave it with Fish and Game.
So it's going to be up to them if they're witnessing violators to contact Fish and Game.
Fish and Games.
Okay.
I think we all leave it that way. And Conservation Committee is going to be, I'm sure, Commission is going to be continuing to talk about this because Lou Shelley is particularly interested in the Class 6 roads and as you know from the letter from Fish and Game, they're quite aware that snow... And as you know, from the letter from Fish and Game, they're quite aware that snowmobiling in this town is a big activity in the winter.
And it's excellently controlled.
And they are, because they control themselves, which is more than we can say for the people who are out there on other vehicles, that we don't know who they are or where they come from particularly. They're not all necessarily from Walpole. But we also have a lot of people in town who are using Jeeps and other licensed vehicles are outriding on some of these roads as well. And they don't want anything to happen to it, they don't want to be stopped. So I'm not sure there's anything for us to do on that at this point. Now, the next sticky question about masks. We have been, it has been requested of us by one of the local business owners that we mandate that all people use, wear masks in town, whether they're going into a restaurant or any one of the retail establishments around town, as well as public buildings. And if you've read the case that just came down, was it yesterday, from the court that upheld the right of Nashua and their council to mandate that everyone in town wear masks. And it seems to me that we then, by virtue of this and what we learned from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, can also mandate that people wear masks in town.
There was a footnote in that court decision.
Yeah, I've got it right here.
Yeah, footnote number three.
Can they open the right file? Yes.
And I didn't quite understand its impact because Nashua is a city.
Nashua is a city, and they have a town council, which is the legislative body.
Right.
Our town meeting is the legislative body.
Body. So there was a little question in my mind whether or not it applies to towns, and it may only apply to cities because it was RSA 3913...
Yeah.
That outlines the...
3139.
3139, okay. That gives us our authorities.
Well, the letter that I had from the New Hampshire Municipal Association said, "At this point, you shouldn't try to do this because of this court case." But when that court ruling comes out, that we would have the right to do that if it came down as it has.
Right. I just didn't understand that footnote.
Well, he's saying that it governs the rights of towns, meaning us, to pass local legislation. But Nashua is a city, and so a different RSA gives a city the authority to pass legislation.
But it didn't say that, did it say that we had the authority or it just said that...
It just says, "The plaintiff only relies on case law addressing RSA 3139, which governs the authority of towns to pass local legislation." Nashua, however, is a city, and the legislature has afforded cities additional authority to pass legislation.
Right, but then... That health, the health standard that they applied to this whole thing was not in that RSA for towns.
But the health standards are something else. And we were told that, our statement that came from NHMA, and I've got it in my files, started by saying, "Your health officer has the authority to mandate people wear masks if he feels that it is important." And then they went into what we could do and not do, and they told us we had the authority to, right now, say, before this court case, to tell people that if they were in town-owned buildings, they had to wear masks. But for other businesses, he wanted, they wanted us to wait until this came out, this decision came out.
So my feeling is that we should mandate masks on all town-owned property and leave it to the business owners to enforce it within their own businesses.
Well, to mandate it, yeah.
Mandate that they're allowed to mandate it within their own...
And give businesses the permission to demand it for their own businesses.
Right.
I think that's fine.
I don't have any trouble with that. We'll write a letter to that effect, and I would urge them, frankly, that they do that.
Yeah.
That there not be exceptions, that, you know, one business says, "Yes, we want you to wear masks," and the next one says, "No, we don't."
Because there's different kinds of businesses, right? Restaurants, you can only wear masks up until the table because you can't eat with them on.
Right, true.
They have to write their own rules.
We have to follow the state rule on that.
Yeah, there's going to be all kinds of interaction of things. But we all know that Walmart passed, Walmart stores across the country, Kohl's, I think, was...
Kroger's, the other one.
Kohl's, yeah, Kroger's.
Star, Starbucks.
Starbucks, so they're all instituting these kinds of controls, so...
Yeah, I read the story.
But Walmart, we can mandate any, on town property, you have to wear the mask. That's it.
Town property or inside town buildings? Because I'm common in town property.
Okay, so inside town buildings.
Yeah.
Or in the recycling center.
Right, inside town buildings.
Right.
Police station.
And the Hooper Institute.
What about the common? That's a good thing. There are people who are meeting out there. There's an exercise group that meets out there, I don't know how frequently, every week, probably?
It was a Tai Chi.
It looks like a Tai Chi group.
Yep.
Should they be wearing masks?
They're outside six feet apart, I mean... I think that kind of falls somewhat under the recreational guidelines for using appropriate social distancing and wearing masks.
Right. But wearing masks. We're asking people to do that in recreational...
If they're unable to keep appropriate distances, I think they should, yes.
Even if they're outside?
Yeah.
If you can't keep distances.
Well, increasingly, you know, stores and companies are all mandating mask-wearing, and all the health officers around the country are urging it as well.
So we need to be compliant, we need Dr. Shaw to...
Oh, it wouldn't help.
Write a recommendation.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt if we ask him to support our efforts to encourage people to wear masks. He has the authority to order it.
Right.
I think he'd most likely support that idea, but...
Pardon me? I think he'd support that idea. I think he would, too.
But we should update the guidelines for the town buildings as soon as we can.
Yes, our town, outside, it should say that masks are mandatory.
Yeah, we're expecting that. Yeah, we'll update the note tomorrow.
Right. Well, it's Tom, who's obviously going, who is most interested in our shoring up his request that everybody entering his restaurant or grocery store wear masks. He would like our, clearly, he wants our support for that.
Yeah, I'm well in favor of it, because the final decision is his.
Yeah, well, he's made that.
Sure, he made his decision.
He's already signed, he's already got the signage up there.
Yeah.
They're just requesting it, but they're not confronting people about wearing them. But they're, you know, they're saying it's mandatory.
That is the issue. It's up to the individual store, retail store, whatever, to enforce it. I know that Shaw wants people to wear masks, but they don't enforce it because there are people in there who don't wear them.
Right.
The clerks do, all the health wears them.
There are some businesses that are retail that have their health not wearing them.
Is that right?
You go over to the Jiffy Mart, the Jiffy Mart down here, are we 12?
Yeah. They're not wearing masks.
People who are wearing masks sometimes, Dunkin' Donuts wears them, sometimes they don't.
Mr. G's group's not, they're a line of business, they're not wearing them. Yeah, Five Star wasn't wearing them. Dollar General's not wearing them.
Right.
Well, that's regrettable.
Tell them a reason why when you go in, you should be wearing yours.
That's right, absolutely. Okay, is there any other discussion we want on that? So I will let Tom know that we are going to order everyone on town buildings, in town buildings, town property, to wear masks, and that we support his efforts to ask everybody to come in, who comes into his store. It's like the signs that used to say, "No shirt, no shoes, no entrance." He should do the same thing.
No service.
No service at all. Come in here without a mask, you'll be asked to leave.
How do you feel about that in town hall? I was going to ask that.
I think we have to...
They can't come in the building without a mask.
You can't come in if you don't have a mask on.
Okay.
If you forget one, we'll provide you with one.
We will, we have them, and we, both offices have them this year.
Yeah, we'll provide them with one.
Yeah, we'll provide them with one, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
I think that's important. And when you go to the window, do you have your mask on?
I don't usually because of behind the plexiglass, and I feel I have plexiglass there. But when I go into the hallway to go to the bathroom or let someone in, we all wear a mask when we go out of the office. Yep.
Okay. Okay, well, you'll change the signs outside our door here, please. Is there any other new old business that needs to come up then tonight? The only new business we have are two cards that I don't know whether you've seen those yet. Steve and I signed those cards. One is a condolence card for the Paquettes, and the other is a thank you note to Jan Galloway. They were, I don't know where they are, do you know?
They're under new business.
They're in the folder.
Oh, they're in the folder, okay. I guess I saw it there.
New business, someone right here?
Yeah, maybe that's it.
It's in there.
Okay. Is there any other new business to come up tonight? I would just remind everybody that next week, Jay Khan will be here, and that we will have Boy Scouts here as a service. Are they earning their government badge or...
They're earning citizenship in the community.
Citizenship in the community badge.
Right.
How many will there be?
About eight, I suspect, yeah.
Oh, and thank you, Steve, for arranging to get those picnic tables for recreation.
Good.
They were delivered Saturday. It's on Facebook, I saw it.
Would it be appropriate for us to give, we could, I'm sure, do this on the computer, a certificate to each one of those scouts that acknowledges they attended a select board meeting?
We can do that, but they'll get credit just by being here.
Okay, alright, okay.
It's a requirement, citizenship in the community has about 12 requirements, and that's, I think, we're up to requirement number three or four now. So they still have a lot more work to do before they can...
I just thought it might be fun.
It might be fun. It's a good idea, it's always, it's always good to recognize youth.
Do you know that they're ringing the bell there for first responders at the Congo Church? They ring it every night at 7:00.
Oh.
They hand ring it.
Really?
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
I can hear it now.
Yeah.
How did you set it?
Okay. No other new business then?
Can you just, what are, tell me what we're thinking, Jan, for, what did she, she donated something?
The wood that got cut up at the recycle center.
The tree that fell on the... Oh, yes, that's right, yes, yes, okay. Yeah, okay, yes, I forgot, thank you.
And if you have the opportunity to drive by, it's almost up.
Wow!
They're working rapidly, aren't they?
They're working rapidly, yeah.
If there's no other business to come before us in the select board tonight, then I would like a motion to adjourn the regular select board and a motion to go into the Hooper trustee meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.